Putting in progress.
I call the June 8, 2021, meeting of the Long Hill Planning Board to order at 7:33. Can we have the announcements, please?
Absolutely. Number one on the agenda, call to order and statement of compliance. Adequate notice that this meeting has been provided by posting a copy of the public meeting dates on the municipal bulletin board and website, by sending a copy to the Echo Sentinel newspaper, and by filing a copy with the municipal clerk. Number two, standard board procedures. Any hearing conducted by the board is a quasi judicial proceeding. Any questions or comments must be limited to issues that are relevant to what the board may legally consider in reaching a decision, and decorum appropriate to a judicial hearing must be maintained at all times. Number three, meeting cutoff. Announcement is made that as a matter of procedure, it is the intention of the planning board not to continue any matter past 10:30 p.m. at any regular or special meeting of the board unless a motion is passed by the members then present to extend the meeting to a later specified cutoff time.
Pledge of allegiance. Do we have the flag? Thank you.
Put it up. You see it?
Pledge allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag.
The United States of America.
And to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call. Deputy Mayor Ray must be having trouble because he's currently absent.
He was here.
He was here. I'll note when he comes on.
Thank you.
Committeeman Verlezza is currently absent. Ms. Dill?
Not here.
Mr. Hands?
Yeah.
Mr. Malinowski?
Here.
Mr. File?
Here.
Mr. Richardson?
Here.
Vice Chairman Jones?
Present.
Chairman Sandow?
Here.
Chairman, we have a quorum.
Thank you. The first item on the agenda is to acknowledge the fact that the Delaware Avenue application number 18-01 Zulu Parisi subdivision will not be heard tonight, although it was supposed to be. So we will need a resolution to extend the hearing, carry it to July 13. I'm assuming that the, we're covered for that, Debra. We have their permission?
Yes. That's, they requested that date.
Mr. Jones?
Yeah, do we know why they are not present tonight?
We were told that they were, based on the last meeting, they were going to look at other options.
We left them with a long grocery list of things we wanted to see from them, including a definitive statement of whether or not this was going to be a density modified subdivision that they were applying for. So I'm assuming that there, there was some question about setbacks and trees and so on that still had to be improved by them. So I'm assuming that they're just taking time.
Okay, and I think also, Mr. Hand raised some concerns about looking at potential, making that a cul-de-sac as opposed to a pass-through. There's also some conversation around the number of homes being subdivided, eight properties, and maybe looking at that as, because there were previous applications by the father.
Yeah, that was, that was a comment from the public, or a question from the public.
Yeah.
At any rate, I'm sure they are regrouping.
That's fine.
Will someone please offer that resolution?
Someone?
All in favor, raise your hand. Any opposed?
So it's noted that the application is carried to July 13 with no further notice required by the applicant.
So be it. The next thing on the agenda is minutes, and due to production problems, we don't have those today. Although, I will ask that, Debra, start sending these out immediately. Whatever you have that you might have sent out this morning, send it out tomorrow so that we have plenty of time to process these. There will be, as you can see, the, these go all the way back to January, so there's five months worth of minutes stacked up. And so the more time we all have to review them, the better off we will be. The next item, Brendan, are you here yet?
Negative.
The next item on the agenda is a report of action at the township committee, and in the absence of both Mr. Verlezza and Dr. Ray, I'm afraid I'm going to have to give that report. Two things have happened recently at the township committee that should be of concern to us. At the meeting two weeks ago, 13 days ago, the township committee granted a variance. Now, we all know they don't have the authority to do that, but they did it anyway. This was for allegedly a swimming pool that was oversized.
They didn't grant a variance.
Excuse me?
It did not, Mr. Chairman, they did not grant a variance. They waived an engineering requirement.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. All the same. And they did it out of turn, and they did it without testimony, and they did it without any paperwork or any briefing on the law, and they did it in spite of the fact that the, their attorney said, this is not a good idea. So be advised that somewhere in town, there is a swimming pool that is adding more impervious cover than it is allowed to add, and without the necessary recharge capability through drywells or whatever. Some of us who watched that meeting thought that this was entirely out of turn, but they did it anyway. I was hoping that one of the members of the township committee would give a report on that tonight, but I guess it's not going to happen. Don, do you want to add anything? You're muted. Can't hear you.
Yeah, I have so many fans on, I turned the mic off. No, I read through some of the information provided, and it definitely appears that there were some things out of bounds. And, you know, I think it just needs to be addressed, and the right protocol needs to be addressed in regards to reviewing and approving these types of changes, whatever we're calling it, whether it's waiving engineering review or a variance. Just need to be more disciplined.
I had put in a call to the town engineer to ask for a discussion about his role in this. Apparently, my reading of the ordinance is that he could have issued the waiver without taking it to the township committee, but he may have a different interpretation. The interesting thing is, this is the ordinance that we rammed through in February because the state had changed the regulations on stormwater management. So we, we did a me-too ordinance back in February, and the, this apparently didn't sit too well with at least one applicant who took their case to the township committee for relief. And I am disappointed, and I am hoping that we can learn something, that we can make a productive change to the ordinance, or not. Any comments?
My only, my only takeaway, too, just to add a footnote to what you just said, Mr. Chairman, is I hope we can just constructively move on and learn from it, because there are some really good things that we as board members can learn from this particular case example. I mean, we, we learn from when we go out of bounds better than when we always stay in bounds in regards to the scope and specter of what the township committee board should be able to do versus zoning and planning. So I hope we can do that.
For those of you who care to write this down, you can go to the website and grab the video of the township committee meeting two weeks ago, and starting at about three hours, maybe three hours plus a few minutes into the meeting video, you can hear a 10-minute discussion about how this happened and what they were doing or attempting to do. The second item that I have with regard to the township committee is good news. On tomorrow night's agenda, the township committee is going to refer to the planning board for a discussion, an area in need of redevelopment. Some of you may remember the fun time we had back in 2018 when we spent five minutes, five meetings talking about an area in need of redevelopment. There's another one coming up. The resolutions on tomorrow night's agenda, which you can read for yourself, call for a referral to the planning board, starting with the planning boards issuing a map, calling for a hearing, and proceeding to hear the public and decide whether or not this really is an area in need of redevelopment. For reference, we're talking about the car wash. My expectation is, by the time the paperwork gets finished and we get to the point where we have a hole in the schedule, it's going to be into the fall. And I am further hoping that it won't take five meetings, but we cannot control that. We, we are by ordinance required to study whatever the township committee asks us to study. Any questions about that?
So at least that's one lot, right?
Say again?
Is it one lot? That's one lot, or is it larger than one lots?
One lot that, that one lot that currently contains the car wash and the adjacent retail building, which has been pretty much empty for about the past four or five years.
It should be simple in some regards.
Say again?
It'd be simpler than, not as extensive as some of the other discussions.
There was a related discussion at the April 14 meeting, that's two months ago, of the township committee, about a development proposal for that lot. And the township committee at the time, two months ago, promised the developer that they would get the process started to make this an area in need of redevelopment. You can read a little bit about it in the minutes of that meeting, or you can watch the video of that meeting. I believe that the redevelopment study here has nothing at all to do with any proposed uses. But I can't be sure because they haven't sent us anything yet. But any questions on that? The next item on the agenda is a report of the PRISM committee, if we have one.
Yeah, yeah, Mr. Chair, I can speak to that. Just in short, Mr. Ray, Mr. File, myself, met to have a conversation about how to take this forward. There's some ancillary work that needs to be done with talking to our professionals to get some estimates on any costs that may be incurred, to ensure we have the right people in the room to have the conversation. So that, that process is now going forward. So we should have that, that information hopefully by the next planning board meeting. I know that we're also working to go get examples of what we think we want, get actual visuals, so we can have a constructive conversation with the professionals, and then have our conversation with PRISM themselves.
I believe that I heard at the last meeting, Dr. Ray tell us that American Water has a five-year deadline to get the sewer system improved.
Yeah, I, my recollection is, is, that's, that is true, that, that statement.
It had been my belief that the five years clocked from the judge's confirmation of the fair share housing settlement, which was three years ago, but Brendan says it started with the contract last summer. So apparently, all these projects that require new sewer connections will be somewhere off in the future.
Well, two to four years, depending which clock you're going by, and we're not sure what is the actual, I tend to agree with Mr. Ray that it's from the time of the sale, which was back in August of last year, so we're coming up on that one-year anniversary, so it will be four years from that point.
Victor, are you coming in? Are you with us?
Yeah, Victor's been having some challenges, but he, as we can see, he's finally made it in.
Can you, can you turn your mic on?
Yes, sir.
There you go. Committeeman Verlezza has joined us at 7:50, and Victor, we were just talking before you came on, we were talking about the episode at the last meeting of the township committee where you guys approved the swimming pool. Do you want to add anything from your perspective?
You know, you, you I, you know, I was just, I, I was just doing some thought about it, and I just was hoping that, to put it in simplest terms, that that wasn't stepping on the toe, the toes of the zoning board. If you're asking about the pool ordinance thing?
Yes.
It's not a zoning board, it's not a land use ordinance, it's a general code.
So no. So that answer would be no.
Correct. So it did not step on the toes of the zoning board. That's why it was not a variance, that's why it was just a waiver of the engineering requirements.
Got it. Thank you, thank you, Deb.
The, the concern I have is where do these waivers of requirements, how many of these waivers of requirements are going to go to the township committee as opposed to going to the boards? Are we on a slippery slope here by allowing the township committee to make these decisions without hearings?
Well, the, the zoning board can't waive the engineering requirements.
Thank you, thank you, Debra, I was really asking Victor.
Oh, sorry.
You know what? I, I think that it might be possible that we need to amend the ordinance. Is also something I was hearing?
Yeah, but we just passed that ordinance back in February at the request of the township engineer, and now he's recommending that the ordinance that he recommended in February should be changed. I'm confused.
I'm, I'm a little confused about it myself, to be honest with you, but you know, I'm getting mixed opinions. I, I, I'm hearing it's no big deal, then I'm hearing it's, it, it could be, then I'm here, so, so I'm really getting a lot of mixed feedback on it. What's your thought on it?
Well, my thought on it is the township committee has got enough to do without getting involved in waiving engineering requirements at 11:30 at night.
So you, what, what do you feel is, is, is the solution here?
I don't know.
I don't, I don't know.
If we believe in, if we believe in stormwater management, if we really believe what the master plan and the ordinance says, then we should not be hasty in allowing waivers. That's, that's my opinion. Now, if, if we were in Jersey City where there's only pavement and there's no room for drywells, this might be a different matter, and they may have different ordinances down there. But out here in semi-rural country, recharge and, and stormwater management tends to be very important to us, and exceptions to it should not be taken lightly. That's my opinion. Unless you want to get a whole rafter of these things coming in.
No, but again, I've been discussing it. What's the solution at this point?
Well, at this point, I think the deal is done.
Yeah. But what I'm hearing the solution is, is to actually make an amendment to the ordinance.
Well, that's Paul's solution. But that does not, that does not necessarily improve our stormwater management in town. That only makes it less necessary to get exceptions.
Well, I believe, Mr. Chairman, if I may, Paul Ferrero is recommending the change in the ordinance, go from 400 square feet of impervious coverage to require a drywall to 1,000 square feet.
Paul recommended the ordinance in February.
Wait, wait, let me just finish, which was also what our board engineer recommended as far as lessening the requirements a little bit. So what, regardless of what happened in March, and I don't, I don't have the ordinance in front of me to be able to speak to that, but I don't think that, that was the DEP regulations that also were in place, put back in place for March, because the DEP regulations got stricter. So what the current discussion has been, based on the annual report that we, that the zoning board provided to the planning board and to the township committee, and based on this particular scenario of an above-ground pool being 456 square feet, which is only 56 square feet over the current requirement, that's being very financially burdensome to a family that just wants to put in an above-ground pool. So the discussion has been to raise the requirement from 400 square feet to 1,000 square feet.
There's two things you can't buy at the end of the pandemic. One is bicycles, and the other is swimming pools.
Correct.
And, and, you know, either, either we believe in stormwater management, or we believe that they should wait till they can buy a smaller pool. And yes, I understand that putting in a drywall is expensive and going to the boards are expensive, but the ordinance was, was installed, we were talking about this two years ago in the ordinance review committee, we were talking about changing the, the ordinance, and Paul asked us to wait until he got new guidance from the state. And when he got, finally got new guidance from the state, he sent that to the township committee, and the township committee adopted it in February, and now he thinks it's onerous. Somebody's got to decide how strongly we feel about stormwater management, and only 56 feet. Yeah, I understand the argument. I don't understand why 56 feet merits an exception, but 80 feet might not. Victor, your turn.
I, I think that we were looking to make it a little more significant of an exception. Is that correct, Deb? We were looking to?
Well, I, I, as far as exceptions go, I mean,
Or change it, in other words.
I don't know if anybody else would come, it would be 80 feet. I mean, we have not had anybody else challenge the current ordinances at this point.
We do not, we do not know the address of this, we do not know comments from the neighbors, we do not know any testimony. All we know is the word of, of the town administrator who was relaying a lot of information from a lot of people, all of which a board would consider hearsay.
Well, the township administrator did it based on recommendation from the township engineer.
It's hearsay. She cannot testify as an engineer. She has no credentials.
She wasn't testifying as an engineer.
Excuse me?
So why are we discussing this tonight?
Yeah, she wasn't.
We're discussing it because the, the board may want to take a stand as far as changing the ordinance versus.
So then we do that when it comes to us. Why discuss it now?
Right. Well, regardless of what happened at the township committee, the discussion, even from the zoning board and the recommendation from the board engineer, the discussion currently from the township engineer that was brought to the committee was that the ordinance be changed. They're, they're planning on changing it, from my understanding, to the current 400 square feet to 1,000 square feet.
But they have to, they have to hear public comment before they can change the ordinance. They have to send it here for a discussion of conformity with the master plan, which has a lot to say about stormwater recharge. It's not a slam dunk, in my opinion.
That's why we shouldn't be discussing it now until it gets here.
All right, Alan, thank you very much. Let's move on.
Before we move on, Mr. Chair, I just only have one comment. If this, is this going to set precedence for anyone else who wants to circumvent the, the process? And that would be my, my concern.
Absolutely.
If we make a change now, right, if we make a change now, or we say this is what the ordinance says, and then someone goes, goes around the process and then gets what they want, in this case, a pool, what's to stop someone else saying, well, you did it over there, and now you have to do it for me? And if, then you have to do it over there, and by the way, I want to have now a racetrack in my backyard, and it's going to go, you know, against setbacks and stuff like that. So that's my concern. That would be my only comment.
That's a legitimate concern.
And, and it's been voiced to me also since we made, since we had the vote last week. That's come to my attention also.
Justifiably.
But if a, if, 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 if an exception is granted by variance, variance does not set a precedent. The variance is an individual's relation.
Debra is telling us that this was not a variance, that it was merely a waiver of an engineering rule.
No, I just, I just, Thomas, I just answered Thomas's concern. It does not set a precedent if it, if it's granted by variance.
Okay. I don't know if this was granted by variance, but I could see, I could see noise coming from this, but, but I respect your comment, Mr. File, 100%.
Any other comments?
I, I agree on this, on the precedent. I hate to see people going to the township committee. And where does it end? I agree. I think it's a concern.
The next item I have on the agenda is a discussion about restarting the committees now that we're back in Town Hall at the next meeting, and we'll be on television. It will look like this. There we are. We have the opportunity to start holding meetings in the conference room prior to the start of the planning board meeting, as we had done for years and years. To get a lot of work done, we would have to start those meetings at 5:30 or 6:00, and so anybody that wants to work on a committee has got to be prepared for that, and, and then a long evening starting at 5:30 and running till 10:30.
So, question, Mr. Chair, that conference room, obviously, you still have to, you're going to have vaccinated versus unvaccinated people. For vaccinated people, that, there's really no social distancing requirements, but for unvaccinated people, you still, they still have to maintain six feet and should be wearing a mask. Is that room still set up that way? Also, you cannot ask if someone's vaccinated or unvaccinated.
It's, it's the, the township committee has decided to go on the honor system.
Mr. Chairman, might I add, I mean, honestly, with the Zoom, those committee meetings that we have are not open to the public to, to begin with. So quite honestly, if members want to work in the committee, we can also offer Zoom meetings. It doesn't have to be in person, it doesn't have to be on a Tuesday night.
Thank you. I'm, I'm looking for getting back to traditional as the first question. And my question is, are the members? are the members of this committee, of this board willing to go back to committee meetings at, prior to our regular meetings? Or would you prefer some alternative like Deborah has suggested?
For the alternative.
Likewise.
I do both. I presumed worked good last year. Having the same person is not good as needed.
Yeah, Zoom worked pretty well. That would make for a long Tuesday night from 5:30 to 10:30.
Not counting your regular job.
Yeah, presumably the Zoom meetings would have to be on some other night. Because you could not attend a Zoom meeting at home and then get into town hall.
Just as we did the master plan every Wednesday.
End a half hour early and at seven and then commute into town hall. I prefer to stay on Zoom. Don't need to be in person, but.
Let the committee decide.
More opinions, please.
I would just say that I'm, I'm kind of of the hybrid fashion. I think there's a certain element that you have to do, I think, in person. But to maintain and continue to use the technology we've gotten used to, I think affords more flexibility. If people are out of town or traveling, et cetera, to connect with these, these different meetings. And I would be in favor of not having the committee meetings on the same night. It's just too long. You're, I'm kind of done by nine o'clock if you're starting at 5:30 or five to do a meeting. And, and most of the juicy stuff in the hearings are from 10 to 30, it sounds like anyway.
And to be honest, just using the master plan as an example, we were able to edit documents real time, look at stuff together real time. So don't bet everybody else. I thought that was more as productive as being in person.
I kind of agree with the hybrid option also. I don't, I don't see a day where I could possibly have five hours committed to like one thing. But a hybrid might help that or a different night might help that. So I don't mind the option of the committee, the individual committees deciding depending on who's on them. It's my input.
I was going to ask Tom Malinowski to be heard, but I don't see him anymore.
It's technology.
Are you back, Tom?
Yeah, sorry about that, folks. I'm down the shore and we have a lot of thunderstorms going through here. So I might drop out again.
Oh, we don't have thunderstorms in my neighborhood.
No, we have some pretty major ones going through down here that I thought they were past, but apparently not. There's still lightning and thunder in the area.
We, we were talking about and waiting for your opinion on holding meetings in the committee meetings in the conference room versus a hybrid arrangement where committee meetings are held on Zoom on a different night from the board meeting.
I, I think one of the last things I heard was David's comment that said, leave it up to the committees to decide what works best for them. Whenever you have a consensus among the members of that committee, it might be a night that works best Zoom or in person.
I am going to relate to you now my experience with two of the committees. One was the SOP committee, which began to meet last year until it was shut down by, in mid-March. But at the meetings of that committee, we typically had one and a quarter members in addition to myself. It was a four-member committee. And so most of the meetings were spent rehashing what they missed because they missed the last meeting. I am very reluctant to start committee meetings where attendance is not a commitment by the members. Whether that's in person or in Zoom. We had the same problem in late 2019 when we, when the ordinance review committee tackled application improvement. We were at that for about six months with very poor attendance and Yolanda and I wound up doing most of the work. And then ordinance review committee died at the end of 2019. And as far as I know, it hasn't been heard from for 17 months. Comments?
I was in most of those meetings, Dennis, for the siege of discussions. It wasn't just you or Yolanda, by the way.
No comment from me.
I think with the master plan, I mean, we had additional meetings that were well attended by everyone.
Average of seven people per meeting.
Now, I was blessed to be able to attend the master plan committee meetings during the last three months of 2020. And my observation was that the members who came to the meeting, and not all did, came with an open mind. That is to say, they were prepared to discuss whatever was put on the table. But very few members brought business to the table. That the discussion was led by the chairman and everybody went away to return two weeks later to continue those discussions. Clearly, the need for committees of the board is for the committee members to do real work between committee meetings. And, and that would be my expectation. Meetings that are simply wordsmithing exercises, don't turn me on.
And I thought, I don't know if that, that statement is totally true because there was a lot of stuff behind the scenes and emails going back and forth, which you probably were privileged to most of. So there was work being done. And unfortunately, sometimes we got it, you know, the day of. But people were taking their assignments seriously to get to the next meeting.
Correct. And, and it was weekly, not bi-weekly. And sometimes twice a week.
I, I think it depends on the committee and the commitment of the members.
The other issue that troubles me with regard to master plan is that a lot of the discussion was handled by members of the public who were part of that committee. Whereas the final decision-making and ownership of the master plan belongs to this board and to the members of this board. And to have the master plan committee go through a lot of exercise and then have it come to this board for adoption. When the members of the board have their own opinions, I mean, quite frankly, if you go back to late 2016, when we put the land use ordinance on the table, there was still work to be done that the board recognized and sent back to the master plan committee. And that work has still not been brought to the planning board over four years later. Similarly, in late 2018, four members, four elements were brought to the planning board. The planning board sent them back for more work. And some of them have still not come to the committee.
That's not true.
I am.
That's not true. And I don't see the point of this conversation. We're talking about committees, how we want to structure them going forward. I thought that was a, I'm not rehashing the past. If, if we're doing that, I'll say goodnight.
I second that.
My, my, my request of the board tonight is that members of the board take an individual responsibility for some missing pieces in the land use ordinance. And that the individual members of the board prepare pieces that are missing in the land use element and bring them directly to the board. And I would rather discuss the individual pieces rather than dump the whole 40-page land use element on the board and then home in on the individual pieces after the entire product is finished. I would like to look at the specific pieces that still need work and have individual board members take ownership of those pieces.
Mr. Chair, do you have a list of what's missing?
Yes, I have. I'm glad you asked. The first thing that I am concerned with is.
Would it be, would it be better served if the list was sent around and we digest it over two weeks period?
It's, it's very, it's fairly simple. There are about four items that I think still require decision by the board as to what the land use element should say. And I think we can, we can cover that list very quickly. And I'll look for volunteers who would like to take ownership of each one of these elements.
So is it your understanding to have this doled out this evening and decided this evening or doled out and then to come back to this group?
If I can get volunteers for these elements, fine. If not, we'll come back. But it is, it, it, there is no, the, the land use element as it has been processed by the master plan committee is quite close to being finished. But the contentious elements are going to tie us up unless we resolve the contentious elements before the element itself is finished. And that, that's my request tonight is that we focus on the elements that need fixing or that need improvement or that need completion. And then plug them into the existing framework of the land use element. So that when it comes to the board, we don't have to argue about some fundamentals. Are you with me, Tom?
My, my connection's been a little unstable. But I got the general gist, if you can hear me. Can you hear me?
One, one item.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay. All right. Everyone else is frozen.
Your video did freeze up a little bit, but.
Everyone is frozen. But as long as you can hear me, that's all that matters.
Okay. The first, first thing I'd like to have someone volunteer to do is tackle the downtown valley issue of residences.
Sorry, just, I want to back up one second. I remember at the outset, you were talking about a technical rider. Is that still on the table or is that now?
That's still on the table, but not yet. In other words, I don't think we are ready to start the final writing process yet until these major issues are settled so that we know how to work them in. Did you get that, Tom?
I did.
Okay. First item that I think is a hotspot is Valley Road Residential. We have since the late 2007, 2008 timeframe, we vacillated back and forth on whether or not residences should be allowed. At one point, we were all in favor of it. We, the board. And then the township committee shot that down and then the board reversed on that and said, no residences. And then cooler heads prevailed and ultimately about four or five years ago, there was a compromise that said residences are prohibited except on the second floor. Which is the way the mass, both the master plan and the ordinance now read. However, we've got the redevelopment zone of thermoplastics, which the township committee intended to have residential, except that was shot down because of floodplain issues. There's a development over on Plainfield Avenue that's before the zoning board that, where there's a residential component. There is this situation that I talked about earlier that's on the agenda for tomorrow night for a, in need of redevelopment area, which will be a residential structure. Is it time for the master plan to make a case to allow residential development on Valley Road? And if so, with what restrictions? And I'd like a volunteer to work that issue and bring it back to the board.
Dennis, would you mind just going through four first so we get scope, get some ideas of what the other, before we think about which ones we may feel best suited for?
All right, I'll be glad to do that.
Thank you.
The next thing that bothers me is Myersville. Back in about 10 years ago, maybe a little longer, we passed a standalone element and defined the Myersville Hamlet. And essentially it said, no change. But if you go up to Myersville right now and look what no change has brought us, I imagine you will be disappointed. We've got two closed restaurants, although one of which has started a little bit of construction after 42 months of, since they got approvals. The Myersville Inn shows no sign of reopening after two and a half years. Archie's is a construction yard now with a fence in front of it. And the master plan committee has for a number of years said, we're going to leave Myersville alone. We're not going to touch it. We're just going to incorporate it as it stands into the land use element. My question is, is there something better that can be done with Myersville? And would someone like to take on the writing of a revised Myersville Hamlet era zone that, that might do some good up there? That's number two. Number three is Main Avenue. We've got a, the same situation with residential. No residential on the first floor. But there is an application in front of the zoning board across from the hotel that would build an apartment house there on those two lots. And the question here is, do we want Main Avenue to be a mixed use including residential exceptions and variances? Or do we really want to make a walkable commercial community? Which means finding incentives to develop more businesses on Main Avenue other than a couple of salons and a couple of restaurants. And the, what I'm looking for here is someone who can write language for the Sterling Village Zone that would really incent the development or really lock down the fact that it's not going to be developed one way or the other. So we don't have to have this discussion forever. What I read in some parts of the master plan elements is we should make it look like we think it would have looked like if we had any examples left. And that's really not a plan. And the fourth item that I'm concerned about is Barrett Roofing. Right now, the master plan element has almost entirely eliminated the office zone because various parts of the office zone have been subsumed into other zones for affordable housing or for parkland or whatever. And the only major component left in the office zone is Barrett Roofing. Because 25 years ago, the master plan thought that that would make a good office zone. And although the current master plan. And although the current master plan drafts talk about uh disposing of the office zone because there's so very little left. Barrett Roofing itself is left unnamed and untouched in the office zone. Even though it sits between the Cooper Lane townhouses and the Prism uh multi-family houses. And I'd like someone to tackle Barrett Roofing and come up with a proposed language for how that would fit into the master plan. Those are my four items. And now, would anyone like to volunteer to research, tackle and propose the correct master plan language for any of them?
Before there's any volunteers, I was gonna say before any volunteers, what is the turnaround time that you're looking at?
Uh, I I leave that to individual initiative. Clearly, we've got hearings going on for the foreseeable future. Uh, we won't get to tackle all this all at once. Time is what keeps everything from happening all at once. So, uh, within months, whoever gets here first. Alan.
I'll take Barrett's.
You'll take Barrett?
I've already done a lot of work on it.
Thank you. You were the person who said that Barrett should be left alone. At the last meeting that I attended of the uh master plan committee.
No, that was only, that was only because of of pressure from uh township committee.
Fine.
I've always, I've always viewed Barrett's as 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 transitional between Cooper and and Prism.
Wonderful. I will write your name down here in pen.
I already did.
Yeah, but I've got the list. And I do my crossword puzzles in pen. Okay, who's next? David.
Guess which one?
Which one?
You got it. But my caveat is I'd like to do it with somebody else.
Keep speaking.
Tom, you're on mute.
I'm on mute.
Yeah, I just, I hit the mute, uh, quick like, yeah, Dave, Sterling, I would help you and Alan, if you needed any help with Barrett.
Thank you. Yes, perfect.
I think the tough one Nobody's from there.
I am.
Oh, I'm sorry, Tom.
It's alright, I'll take Myersville.
Good luck on that one, Tom. That's the, that's the easiest.
Tom is take, Tom, wait a minute, let me get this down. Tom is taking Myersville?
Yeah.
Tom Jones? And you re- you realize, of course, that most of the pitchforks in town will be aimed at you.
That's how I'm used to it.
Okay. Alright, David, your choice again was?
Sterling with Tom. And I pick somebody else if somebody else doesn't volunteer for the other ones to make it a three person.
I was also just gonna offer my help to either help Tom, Alan, or David because I I will, I don't feel confident taking one of these on my own. Um, but I'd be happy to like bounce ideas off of or proofread anything. Uh, I think that'd be better suited for me, just like
Teresa, I have already written your name under Sterling. You didn't know it.
Yeah, it makes sense. So I'm happy, but I don't want to step on Mr. Malanaski's toes either. I know So David, I'm happy to help you with that. I've, you know, familiar with Main Street, but
I'd be happy for you to.
Cool.
That'd be great. That'd be great. Thank you.
Uh, I have a lot of background information about problems with the current layout of Sterling and if you will invite me to your first meeting, I'd like to lay a lot of stuff on you that I've thought about and counted and stuff having to do with setback and mixed uses and so on. And oh, and and I understand the barber shop is closed.
Yep.
Yeah, he he died.
There's an opportunity there that we need to start thinking about.
But he, he, he passed away, right?
Yes. And there's, but there's a building in a parking lot there. Say again?
Just one minor add-on or caveat. We talk about the historical area as well. Could we incorporate that in the conversation about downtown Sterling?
No, I would rather you s- you not mix this up with historical because Main Avenue as it is stands today is really only got one historical building on it. And I think we all agree that it's not worth preserving. Um, stick with the, with the Sterling Village S, the SV zone as it stands in the land use element. That would include the industrial areas to the west, which we were going to bring into SV.
Okay.
I'm, I'm now down to residence, uh residential uses on Valley.
Denominate, signed out. So I had not, that was a second.
There's at least, there's at least one member of the zoning board who would come after me with a pitchfork if he knew we were talking about this.
It's not a terrible thing.
Does anyone want to tackle?
I I can tackle that, Dennis, but I have another priority that I think really should be looked at and that is uh, the, the connections to the Gillette Train Pub uh are just abysmal. The safety and people walking out on that road, I am uh, it's just, it's appalling how that station of the three how badly situated and poorly designed that whole setup is in Gillette.
Well, you should have thought of that a hundred and fifty years ago. It's too late, change it now.
It's my hundred and twenty-ninth birthday. It's just one year off.
Dennis, if I might, do you mind if I just interrupt for a second?
Please.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Don, you bring a very good point. We spent a bunch of time talking about Gillette in the downtown, you know, business zone because it has been absent in the prior master plans. So I think your point, if I may take expand upon it, is we should also focus on Gillette. I think we've got the four, you, we've talked about Myersville, Sterling, Millington, downtown. I think Gillette is gonna stick out as a sore thumb if we don't
Last thing to be tou- touched on. And there's a lot going on. I mean, we have an application um there. Uh, I don't know if people have seen, but um uh Tony's putting in about a half million dollars into refronting that whole strip mall where um uh, the deli is and the post office.
Oh, yeah.
So, and the development that we approved across the street looks great next to Ancona. So, I mean, there, there is some inertia in addition to, you know, I know there was a lot of blowback on the redevelopment study. Right. But I, I, I think we need to forge ahead. There's change happening whether we like it or not. And we should have a plan to see if we can corral some of that change in the, in the right direction.
Yeah, but link that to the train station.
Well, that's the challenge is, is connecting that and circulation and safety related issues of people walking to that train station instead of taking their cars, you know?
Well, there are as many as ten cars in that parking lot recently.
What's that?
There are as many as ten cars in that parking lot.
Yeah, but Dennis, that's not sustainable. We got, this is a plan. That's what's happening now. We gotta set up ourselves for a plan, what that's gonna look like in ten years. You can't tell me that that train station doesn't provide value to the community. And it's just kind of an afterthought. It looks like a glorified bus stop. It's embarrassing.
Yeah, I would say you're right, uh, Mr. Richardson. The, the the ability to walk to that station puts you out on the main road that there's like one part of sidewalk that extends uh, I think south uh of the tracks, but then it ends. And then you got this partially paved, broken up walkway extending north of the train station and that ends and it's not even lit. So it's, it's behind some trees, so.
Is this, is this a circulation issue or is this a uh Gillette Village issue?
Gillette Village.
Yeah, I think it really has to, it it really goes to the heart of Gillette Village and then its connection to the train.
You know, now that I think of it. Valley Road was in service uh twenty years, thirty years before the train station, before the railroad came through. Valley Road was built in the twenty, eighteen twenties and thirties.
You were ten, right?
And Gillette may be the only high ground on Valley Road. Which is why the village formed there, whereas Millington and Sterling Village is formed around the train station. So we've got an apples and oranges situation here and the Gillette Train Station sort of got left out of the mix because there already was a Gillette downtown on high ground.
Right. Now, that's my understanding too, because it's out by the old clay pits that were used for the clay to make the brick down in Newark. I mean, so, you know, we're still looking at all the surface water bodies in and around that train station. A lot of them are old clay pits.
Yeah.
So, yeah, listen, I, you know, and again, i- if that's not a priority, Dennis, you know, we'll punt. I'll be certainly happy to volunteer and
No, I know, nope, nope. I'm just adding to my list.
Okay.
Gillette, Don.
Thank you.
Alright, now Victor, you haven't volunteered for anything yet.
Yeah, unfortunately, I really don't have the time to volunteer. Um, I'm very interested in the downtown Sterling project, but I just don't know if I really have the time with all that's going on on the township committee right now.
I can accept that reluctantly.
Do you have any, you know, any suggestions? Because I really don't have the, a, a super you know, amount of extra time and I'm not trying to jerk the responsibility. I'd love to do what I can.
No, I, I understand and and I haven't pressured you and I won't pressure you. You bring value by representing the committee and we'll have to let it go with that. And did Brendan ever get back into the call anywhere?
No.
Everybody has volunteered for something?
Except Mr. Sandow.
Well, you already volunteered me for Valley Road.
Oh, okay, sorry.
And, and I, I think you know how I have felt all along about residences on Valley Road. So um, I, I don't mind tweaking that element.
Thank you.
But what I'd like to do now is I'd like to recommend that each of you put together something that looks like a segment of the land use element. And let me know when you're ready to bring that in and we will discuss it and the, the board will own that and then we'll cut those pieces in as the missing links in the uh, in the land use element.
Uh, Dennis, just to mention on the land use element draft, we did specify those areas obviously, so some people want to use that as a base. That you've got a base.
It is, it is my intention to take advantage of all the work that's gone on. Uh, the, the editing function that I would like to get done uh and and would like to hire a professional editor to do is to reformat the elements in a consistent way.
That's fine.
In other words, issues, recommendations, action plans. There's about five or six words which the different elements use in different sequences and uh in different contexts. And what I'd like to do is reach a point where all the elements sort of have the same format, where action plans are the last item and issues are the first item and the steps in between are organized in some fashion. And I don't know whether that's horizontal or vertical. Uh, but each element as they stand today uh, has evolved from some prior writing or some new writing by one individual. And they're, they're not homogeneous and I would like to make the master plan read a little bit better. Possibly shorter. So those are the editorial pieces that we will work on later, but first I'd like to get the board's consensus, if not a hundred percent agreement, on some of these major issues so that they do not tie us up when we come to the point of uh reviewing the elements and adopting them. It is also my belief that the elements should be complete. And I mean really complete before they go to public hearing. And that the elements will go to public hearing one at a time. And then the entire master plan will be assembled in one book and adopted as a single entity. Sometime probably late next year. Uh, this will be called the two thousand twenty-three master plan, which is what the schedule, the tenure schedule requires. Uh, I don't want to rush this and besides that, I don't have the money, the funding from the township committee and the budget to rush it. We're gonna have to spread the consultant's work out over several years anyway. So this is a, admittedly a slow start, but I want to handle the tough spots first.
Dennis, just a thought.
David. Alright, Tom, you go first then, David.
Just, just a thought with regard to the public input. Uh, I think we'd be better served if along the way we had some input from the public to a sort of guidance and steering as opposed to waiting to the last minute. Putting everything out there and saying, here's what we've come up with. We hope you accept it. And I think that was one of the things on the master plan committee that really helped with having members of the public along to kind of counterbalance our thoughts.
We will discuss that.
Okay, fair enough.
David?
Yeah, uh, just, just a, just a couple of reiteration points. One is I think the, if you people take a look at those sections that we discussed in the land use, they sort of they do vote in, in, in chapter order in terms of um a layout consistency. But um, I think you have, those are probably the main area, without going into the residential areas. Without thinking about some more of the commercial areas, I think those are, uh, those are the, the fair subjects, the ones we've discussed. So uh, sounds like a good, good starting point.
We also have a separate work item, which is to get our planning consultant involved in specifying the uses. Um, we've been talking for three years about getting rid of the list of prohibited uses because uh, anything that's not prohibit, permitted is prohibited, so we don't really need a list of prohibited uses. But on the other hand, our list of permitted uses could use some work. And we've been talking for several years in the ordinance review committee about allowing that to be a master plan initiative rather than an ordinance initiative. So we're gonna have to get Liz involved in time to create new lists of permitted uses. We probably don't need a prohibition on mink farms or piggeries. Uh, but on the other hand, there's a question about how do we specify the permitted farming uses? And maybe mink farms aren't so bad.
They're not for COVID. You don't want them for COVID.
They're actually, the, the Dunkin' Donuts building used to be a mink farm. Just prior to the Dunkin' Donuts being built and that's probably why mink farms is listed as a prohibited uses because we actually had one.
But didn't, didn't somewhere like Denmark have to kill like twenty million mink because of COVID? Yeah, I digress. Never mind. Never mind. Wasn't important.
So there will be some parallel work going on with uh, with our planning consultant. Uh, but I don't think that's going to affect the major binary decisions that we talked about already tonight. Does anybody have any other old or new? Does anybody have any other old or new business?
Just, just one thing I want to just throw out. Um, Don, if you need any help with the Gillette stuff or need to bounce some ideas off anybody, you can, you know, I, I gladly work with you because I was involved in a lot of the stuff going right from when we started in the master plan committee. And I know I'm helping Alan, so.
Yeah, no, that's great, Tom. Absolutely. No, and I, I, I worked closely with Dennis as we were trying to look at some of the paper streets to improve access to that whole area too, because there's a number of paper streets in the area. And this also ties in guys with, I think the best thing, which may be the biggest lift is trying to deal with New Jersey Transit to get a better east-west. You know, bike path or walking past something to connect uh, all our hamlets running east-west along that right away. So those are, those are exciting things that, you know, we should really start the planning now or at least gathering uh, the data we need to help put together a plan for that.
Don, I'm both glad and sorry that you mentioned it because that's a sore point with me. For years and years and years, the master plan committee has been saying, study a rail trail connection. And my position is after six and a half years of master plan effort, the master plan committee should study that, should talk to uh, transit and find out just what the regulations are and either give it a good kick in terms of planning or stop talking about it.
Yeah, Dennis, there's a, a lot of funding opportunities in that area too. We're going to see an incredible uh, push toward getting people on bicycles and walking and the whole bit. Uh, you know, post-COVID, these are some of the, I think, good, good effects that people have, have begun to embrace in regards to their health.
I am told you can't buy a bicycle in town for less than $7,000 these days. And I certainly wouldn't buy a $7,000 bicycle and put it on a rough trail next to a railroad track.
Yeah, that's everywhere.
Yeah, and everything's short, but these are all, you know, good things.
Kind of a double edged sword with using the rail, rail lines though, because adjacent to the rail lines is wetlands on either side of them all the way. So you, you not only have to deal with New Jersey Transit, you have to deal with conditions that are out there and that.
And, and fencing and fencing. And.
GT and all that. Yeah. Listen, we know all the challenges. I think it's worth it to, at least if we're going to make this effort, and I agree Dennis, it's been at least six years of discussions. Is bring it to a head, you know, one way or another through some research, connections with transit and, and other partners that might help in that arena.
I encourage that and support you all the way. Thank you.
Don, I'd happily work with you on that if you wish to make that a separate item.
Does anyone else have any old or new business? Our next meeting is the 22nd and with luck, that will be a hearing on the Elite Property on Valley Road. With luck. And it will be live on television from the courtroom.
Dennis, if I might?
Yes.
You talked about the SOP committee. We talked about ordinance committee. Do we still, what, what do you want to do? Are you putting, are we still, are they back burner for the time being?
I'm sorry, back burner what?
Are we not pursuing those committees right now in, in favor of this other work?
I would rather focus on getting master plan kickstarted and, and, and involving every member of the board in doing that. We've got some ordinance review stuff queued. The zoning board has sent us some stuff and, and Tom has certainly put together a list of the ordinance issues having to do with Prism. Um, we've got a, a lot on the, on our plate for ordinance review. Uh, but quite frankly, I'd rather not expend the board's resources on that quite yet. And as far as SOP is concerned, we got along without it for so long.
And Dennis, to the earlier point, I'll, I'll throw my hat in the ring if other people want to join. If, if we're going to look back at the ordinance that was recently passed on the stormwater, uh, I'd be happy to volunteer in regards to looking at that. I'm telling you that the state, we really adopted almost hook, line and sinker, the state model ordinance with not many changes, you know, through Paul's recommendation. So, you know, if we're going to make some modifications, I'd be happy to uh, work with someone or with Paul, quite frankly, to figure out how to amend that, if that's the direction that we'd like to go.
Yeah, I think we have a legal issue as to whether or not we can be more or less restrictive than the state model. Uh, typically where stormwater and wetlands are concerned, we cannot, and we have told our applicants that we cannot be more strict than the state requirements. I think this came up recently with regard to uh, uh, buffer transition zones or buffer zones or whatever they're called. That we can't, we can't make a greater requirement than the state. I don't know if we can make a lesser requirement.
No, I think, and, and Dennis, we need to look at it more carefully to find out, is that really a regulation or an impingement on a requirement versus it's, it's a model, it's guidance. Uh, you know, for the towns to use in regards to adopting their ordinance. So I didn't look at it from that perspective and I think Yolanda would have to weigh in on that as well.
Yeah, and the question of whether or not, who's got the actual authority to waive the engineering requirement for dry wells? Back in 2019, when we were doing uh, application improvement, uh, Yolanta and I and whoever was left on the committee at the time, more or less decided that the boards really had no business trying to second guess the town engineer on wetland regulations. We may as well just turn all the authority for those permits over to him. Rather than making it a collaborative effort. That may still be the case, but Paul had some problems at the time, like I said earlier, because of the fact that he was anticipating a new state guideline. Uh, we need to, we need to bring that to ground. And that is going to be a, a series of negotiations involving the two attorneys and the two engineers, probably myself. We all ought to agree as to who should decide on dry wells, who's got waiver authority and get it written down somewhere. Uh, right now, the township committee last week filled what they perceived was a void. Um, it's not clear to me that it was a void, but nonetheless, as, as Tom Jones pointed out, it does send an awful precedent when the township committee is making decisions of this nature. So, yeah, there's a lot on the plate for the ordinance review, but I don't think any of it is as critical as kickstarting the uh, uh, master plan effort.
Agreed.
Any other business? If not, we'll see you in two weeks.
Motion to adjourn?
Wait, wait, wait. We didn't talk about the special meeting dates.
Oh, special meeting dates. I'm sorry. Because of the fact that we've got two uh, applications, two major applications running in parallel on alternate weeks. Uh, the, the Parisi application and the Elite application, both of them are likely to want to go at least another two hearings. And we have only one hearing scheduled in July and August, which means that one or the other of them might have a two-month hiatus. Uh, Deborah and I have been talking about scheduling a second meeting in July and August, assuming that the, those two applicants can use them, otherwise we'll cancel them. But we do have to pass a resolution to put them on the schedule and notice them as an addition to the schedule. And um, I believe we should do that. Just to give ourselves a flexibility of getting those two applications finished. Any comments?
I'm okay with just staying with the regular schedule and then pick up in September.
I second that.
Saying with the regular schedule and what?
And then pick up dates in, in September. I mean, we've been going pretty much.
I mean, if we do, if we do uh, Elite at the meeting on June 22nd and then if Parisi is ready, he'll get the one July meeting and Elite won't be able to come back until August.
I agree with that.
Oh, wow. Then try to get Elite finished next week, next, next meeting.
Uh, yeah, but there's, we still haven't heard from the public. They've still got to bring uh, some of their experts back. I, I, I'm hesitant to believe that we can predict when the last meeting will be.
So it doesn't matter if we had a second date in July or a second date in August, they're probably going to go right on into September.
Okay, uh, before we, before we entertain a vote on a resolution, how about a straw poll? If you think, if you're willing to have a second meeting in July and August, raise your hand. If you are not willing to have a second meeting in July and August, raise your hand. Well, Deborah? I think that, I think that answers. All right, we'll stick with the current schedule.
I'm sorry, Mr. Velez, what was your vote?
Broke the tie.
Well, that just gives us more Tuesday nights to have committee meetings.
No, it doesn't.
Okay, since the zoning board added two dates, I'm fine with it.
The zoning board did add the two dates in July and August. That's correct.
What's, oh, motion to adjourn, sorry.
Just before, before we move to motion to adjourn, uh, there was a, an email about a 10-day notification being expanded to 21 days. Do we need to talk about that now or can we table that to our next meeting? Is there a rush? I'd rather table it to the next meeting.
I have suggested to the township clerk and to the mayor that none of those are relevant to Long Hill. They're relevant to Morris Township. But uh, there's no need for the board to discuss or opine.
Okay.
Morris Township, uh, just for the rest of you, uh, Morris Township passed a series of five resolutions that they sent to the governor and asked for help. But these are problems of Morris Township, which has developments going on adjacent to them in Morristown and Madison. Uh, they want more notice, 21 days notice. They want 400-foot notification instead of 200-foot. Uh, they want more time to negotiate with the surrounding towns. Uh, they're trying to solve problems that are unique to Morris Township, but not to Long Hill. And the township committee wonders if we should send the same resolutions to the governor and I say, why bother? That's, those aren't our problems. Our problems are fair share housing, yada, yada. Deal with our problems, don't deal with Morris Townships. So I, I think I have put that whole thing to bed, Tom.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure there wasn't an action for us to.
No, no, I don't, I don't think we need to discuss any of those.
I tend to agree with that. Okay. All right. Thank you for, for that backstory and information. Nothing more from me.
I'm waiting for someone to.
So moved.
All in favor of adjourning?
Aye.
Aye, aye.
Aye, aye, folks.
See you in person in two weeks, everybody.
Deborah, I won't be there.
Oh, okay. Alan, just remind me that week, please.
Yeah, all right. Will do.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, real quick, what are the, what are the dates in August? I'm looking.